Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien.
Here.
Conflict of interest: any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we proceed to Presentations Item 1.1, Howard Training Center Presentation.
Yes, Mayor Members of City Council, we have the privilege of having Carla Strong in the audience this evening, who will be presenting an overview of the Howard Training Center.
It's nice to be back home in Riverbank. I am Carla Strong, Executive Director for Howard Training Center. You've got to challenge my electronic capability. Howard Training Center started in Stanislaus County in 1953. Sixty-two years ago, we have been providing services to adults with disabilities, which I prefer at this point to call them differently abled. They have abilities, they're just different than ours, and they deserve a place to go, and that's what Howard Training Center is all about. Our motto is teaching people to soar. Our whole goal is to teach them to go as far as their abilities will allow. Any of you been in Series, Howard Training Center, with our differently abled adults? Take care of all of the landscaping for the city of Series. We also do landscaping jobs outside of the city projects that we have. If you've ever stopped at the rest stop in Wesley or Turlock, either north or southbound, those are our job coaches and our differently abled adults who are taking care of both of those rest stops. We do that 24/7, regardless of what the holiday is, there's somebody from Howard Training Center that's there. All of our clients or participants, you'll hear the terminology independent, work closely with a job coach. It's really difficult, because the first thing that happens is we get attached to them, and the next thing that happens is they get attached to us. And that does make it very difficult when we have change in staff. Some of my staff have been at Howard Training Center over seventeen years. Our whole idea is to create jobs where jobs would not be possible, depending on the abilities of the individuals. Being a Scotch drinker, I like the Glen Allen box. We have contracts with Gallo, with Bronco Winery, when they ship product outside of the country, or as Stephanie Gallo talked about last week, they screw up on a label, and it would cost them millions to rebottle. They send them to Howard Training Center, our adults take those labels off, relabel them, and that wine or product gets shipped. Every time they ship anything to Japan, the labels have to be changed, there are different labels that go on there, and our clients, let me tell you, they take great pride in what they do. We have some of our participants that you have to convince them to cash their paychecks. That's a nightmare, any of you that have a balanced business checkbook, and you're carrying outstanding checks now for several years. Of course, obviously, we drop them, but they will not cash them, because they're so proud of the piece of paper. Other things that our Production Unlimited Crew does, we hang and sort all of the clothes for the Hope Chest stores. For Fastenal, they have templates that they learn to put the nuts and bolts into, in order to be able to count how many nuts and bolts have to go into a package and seal the package. They are extremely proud of what they give back to the community, and yet, the bottom line is, we're giving back to them. Our art catering service, if you have never attended our Crab Feed in February, you're missing out. On Friday night, we had 395; on Saturday night, we had 425 for our Crab Fest. We do all kinds of catering. Anytime you need catering here, I'll see that it's personally delivered, can't imagine who would do that for you. And of course, we have our cookies and everything for you also. We're going to talk a little bit more about our Senior Meals Program. We have the contract with Stanislaus County to provide meals in sixteen congregate sites where seniors can come and enjoy the day and visit with other seniors and other people. We also do all of the home deliveries in Stanislaus County. Twenty-five differently abled adults prepare in excess of 12,000 meals a month out of our kitchen for senior citizens in Stanislaus County, with four job coaches and one chef. Let me tell you, they stay busy, and they absolutely love it. Part of the reason why I want to talk to you about Senior Meals, our contract for the county, Stanislaus County pays Howard Training Center $4.50 for each of the meals that is delivered to a congregate site, and $5 for the ones that are delivered at home. Any of you been in the grocery store lately priced an egg? I can guarantee you, the $4.50 and the $5 is not even covering the cost of our food. Our contract with the county requires that we fundraise in order to subsidize those programs. On average, it's $70,000 per program. So we have to raise a minimum of $140,000 a year, just to keep that contract going. Seniors are asked for a donation of $3, but we do not ever turn anybody away. We are very careful, even if they aren't seniors and they aren't really eligible, but we can tell that they need a meal, we don't turn them away either. We serve here in Riverbank on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. Our whole idea is teaching our disabled adults, within the abilities they have, other things that they can do. It's a challenge for some of our clients to even manage to take roll call for their class in the morning. If you've never been to our Stonem Road site, please come for a visit. I'd love to give you a tour, particularly between 9:30 and 3:30. You'll get to meet Carolyn, as she rolls around in her wheelchair, and she tells everybody that she's the official greeter. "Do I know you?" "Yeah, Carolyn, we met yesterday, remember? I'm Carla." "Okay." "Carolyn, come sit out of the sun, you have to come in the shade." She has no sense of temperature. Our staff made her, went out and bought her supplies, and made her a sun hat, to convince her to get out of the sun. Randy is a pacer. Randy walks our entire complex every day, every day. I swear, he has a trench in the hall. And he'll come up to my office, and he'll say, "Hi, miss." "Hi, Randy." "Can I talk with you for a minute?" "Sure, Randy, come on and sit down." "I won't stay very long." Now, I have a trophy on my desk, an award that I got from the Rotary Club. I don't think a whole lot about it. Randy looks at it, because it's clear, and it looks like diamonds. "Are you rich?" "No, Randy, I'm not rich." "They need to get me Pepsi, you know." We have a special fund for Randy's Pepsis, because without Randy's Pepsi, he doesn't have a good day. And he'll sit for a little while, and he'll say, "Okay, miss, I better let you go back to work, you're awful busy." Whitney, who works in our kitchen, her parents bought their home adjacent to Howard Training Center. Whitney gets herself up every morning without an alarm clock. She makes her breakfast, she gets herself dressed, she gets on her bicycle and rides to Howard Training Center, so she can cook for the seniors that we deliver food to. Don't tell Whitney she can't come to work. You know, we're all told, as we're growing up, and our parents give us all the tools that we're supposed to have. You plan ahead, you go to college, you get that good job, you wait to get married until you both have a good job, and you go out and you buy the house, you do all the right things. You have that first baby, and it's wrapped in that blanket, and it's handed to you, and there is absolutely perfection in your arms. That's what happened to the Howard Coolidge and Whitmer families. And as time went on, they found out that that child wasn't exactly perfect. That's what Howard Training Center is all about. We give those perfect individuals a place to go. So in 1953, they didn't have any place to take their children. They started meeting in Gresseta Park, because they could play together and not be ostracized. Fortunately, our society's come a long way since then. But one of our programs is all about taking our participants out in the community. Not only so they get used to being in the community, but more importantly, the community gets used to those people standing on the street corner at the bus stop that look different. And boy, that word hurts, and that's what they're told they are. So they are different. They're absolutely differently abled, and we love every minute of it, we love every one of them. This talks about, a little bit more about our three buildings. We have an average of 225 participants in our program at any one time. This is Robert, and Robert is also our safety chairman, so he runs around to make sure all the fire extinguishers and everything are where they need to be. And the lady that's sitting with him has been in our program twelve years. She depends on Robert every morning. The young lady in the purple cap, that's Nicole. When I first went to Howard Training Center, Nicole didn't like me a whole lot, because she liked the person that was in my job before me. So it's taken Nicole and I a while to get along, but you see that gorgeous smile on her face? Today, she came to me, and she said, "You're not smiling today," and she handed me lunch. That's what Howard Training Center is all about. Thank you for your time. If you're looking for a place to visit, come see me. We definitely need to raise that $140,000 to continue to keep that program going. So anytime you have a few extra dollars in your pocket, think about us, and definitely come talk to Howard Training Center. Thanks for your time.
Did you leave envelopes here, so we can just drop stuff in?
My business cards are here on the table.
Doesn't work, it doesn't take cash. Never mind. Thank you, Carla.
Mr. O'Brien, I will make a personal visit to take cash from you.
Know where I am.
Yeah, and I think I'll probably see you Thursday morning, too. No. I'll be at the store. But definitely, please come visit with us. Our clients love to see new people come in, there's always something else going on. You know, we struggle, like every nonprofit, although I will tell you, we are beginning, and Mayor O'Brien and I talked about this when I first took the position, I'm working with UCP, United Cerebral Policy, we're actually now beginning to partner on fundraising programs together. The idea being, we are all trying to do something better for those in need. So there's a tremendous opportunity out there. Thanks for your time.
Questions? Thank you. Thank you, Carla. Item 1.2, the Stanislaus Alliance Innovation Challenge 2015 Presentation, will be presented at a later date, probably in 2016, means 2015's over with. Item 1.3, update, the planning for the 2015 Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival.
Mayor Members of City Council, we have Chris Ricky this evening to present an overview of the progress being made on the 2015 Cheese and Wine Festival, and Sue Fitzpatrick is also available to address any questions in regards to this event, which is fast approaching.
Mayor, City Council, Chris Ricky. I'm the coordinator of the Cheese and Wine Festival for you guys, for the second year. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you guys, your city, your community, and your great team here at the city, to produce this event again in 2015. All right, so 2014, last year, was our first year producing this event as a city, and we learned a heck of a lot from the experience of producing this event. We're going to go over three things today. Sorry, we're going to do event updates and finances, and we learned a heck of a lot from this event. First of all, last year, we changed the focus of the event from a kind of residential focus in terms of the geography of the event, to a more of a downtown focus, to putting most of the event right here in your downtown core, where you guys invested a lot of redevelopment money to make a really beautiful downtown, and make that a centerpiece of your community. The event stayed within budget and was profitable in 2014. Our vendors returned with positive feedback and are signing up faster this year than they did last year. And entertainment was successful, and our assumption that a children's stage and Hispanic heritage stage were positive and good, and people really enjoyed them. I also feel like our alcohol management directives were executed really well, and our feedback from the Sheriff's Department was really positive. We also had areas that needed improvement, and the biggest area that needed improvement was our wine and cheese tasting area. The first problem that we had was line management. We assumed, since we had made a longer tasting time, that people would kind of come in as the event happened, but that assumption was incorrect. It turns out that all the wine tasting people came at the exact same time. So we were not staffed right to get everybody in, and as a result, on Saturday, the lines were about 45 minutes, and so people were really unhappy. We ended up leaving the tasting area open an extra hour to try to please people for that, but they were still a little bit upset, because it was hot. The cheese tasting, we tried something new with the cheese tasting experience, we wanted to make it more of a tasting where you have experts talking about the cheese, and people interacting with the different experts. The problem is that people, I think that it was successful, but the problem is that people spent so much time with the experts that it created like another line, and that led to people being unsatisfied and unhappy. So we're going to be changing that this year. Finally, the heat was an issue. Even though we prepared for it, we got tents, we got large swamp coolers, it was still just a little uncomfortable in that parking lot. So we're going to try to improve it. We tried a new line management strategy on Sunday. We tripled the staffing at the entrances, and we were able to get people in in about 15 minutes, so that worked real well. We're going to do that again this year. Cheese tasting, instead of doing the cheese tasting in a separate tent, we're going to pair the cheeses with wines, and they'll be served with the wines. And so when people, you know, get their Sauvignon Blanc, they'll try a cheese that's paired with that, and, you know, they'll get the experience of learning about the wine and the cheese at the same time. So we hope that is going to eliminate lines. Finally, in terms of heat, we have contracted with the Masonic Hall this year to use the interior of the Masonic Hall in addition to the exterior street in front of the Masonic Hall and their parking lot, so that we have the extra capacity we need, so we're not, you know, boxed in. But also, people can go into air conditioning if they're uncomfortable. Moving on to execution for this year, we're going to go over sponsorship sales, budget, and marketing, as well as vendor sales, kids' area development. Sponsorship sales, very similar to last year, my company has a goal of selling $10,000 in sponsors this year. We're also hoping that the city of Riverbank staff sells $10,000 this year. And then we have an outside sales representative that we're shooting for a goal of $3,000 in sales. Current sponsorship sales are $13,000 that's been committed. I think we've got $3,000 in hand so far. That's, in terms of where we were last year, that's almost double in terms of the revenue committed compared to last year. Our goal is to stay within the same budget as last year, and thus far, we've managed to do that. We're going to continue our successful partnership with Tracetti's World Cafe to do the wine tasting and the cheese tasting. DBI Beverages has committed to executing the craft beer tasting area, as well as being the lead sponsor on this event. And then, I'm excited to announce that we're working with the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce to improve our event merchandising. Part of that is going to be them selling the glasses. Also, we're going to be moving the merchandise location to a more centralized location, so that it's easier for people to find. People were confused as to, "Hey, where can I buy this year's glasses?", that kind of stuff, and so we're going to put the area in a place where it's really obvious, so people can find it real easy. Marketing-wise, we're going to use the same firm that we used last year, Pacific Media Group, they did a really great job marketing this event. We will be beginning our grassroots promotion in early August, and our intense marketing as last year will begin three weeks prior to the event. And something I'm really excited to talk about is our glass design contest that we're going to be doing, and we're going to be promoting this via social media. And what we're trying to do is get local artists to compete on the design for the glass. And I think that this will get our glasses to be even more collectible than they already are, because I know a lot of people collect them, they want every year's glass. We think that by doing a really creative design is going to increase those sales and increase the collector's value. And at the same time, I'm hoping that it gets people kind of talking about our event a little bit earlier, making it a little more relevant earlier. Government coordination, we met with Riverbank's police chief to discuss the scope of the event, boundaries, rules, and ideas, and that's been going really well. We also met with Stanislaus Consolidated and the Fire Marshal. One of the issues we had last year is that our coordination with fire wasn't quite as good as it could have been, and we made a few mistakes in terms of some of their permitting paperwork. So this year, by meeting with them in advance, we're going to be able to smooth out some of those rough edges. And I think I can talk about this, Sue, right? The possibility of opening the firehouse, is that something we can talk? We're also talking about, as part of the event, when the firefighters aren't on a call, and when they're not busy doing, you know, something that they really have to be doing, if kids want to go and kind of look at the fire engines, they'll park them out on the, in front of the fire station here in Riverbank, which I think is going to be really amazing. I've got an eight-year-old, and I know he's going to absolutely love that. We've been having weekly meetings with Parks and Rec organizing the event, and we've also been meeting with finance to make sure all the money goes where it's supposed to go. Vendor sales-wise, we've been mailing out the packages, and we've been getting a really good response. We've signed up and collected money, about $10,000 thus far. That's up about 40% from last year, so that's good. Just because we're up doesn't mean we're going to necessarily get more revenue, but I suspect we will. I'm feeling good about it. Beer sales-wise, I think I told you the guys this last year on our wrap-up, but our sales were lower than what we had forecast, so the nonprofit sales number will be about half what it was last year. So that's, they're going to come in at $10,000. One of the things we are very committed to is kids' area, and we have got a contract from a carnival to come in and do the cheese and wine, so we're real excited about that. We're working on doing a skateboarding demonstration in, at your skate park, which is located very close to our event area. So we're really excited about that, because we think that it's a way that we can connect, maybe, with kind of the teen end of your city's demographic. And then we're also going to continue to work with the people we had last year, the inflatable slides, the bounce houses, all that fun stuff. These are the event boundaries, I don't know if we need to necessarily go over them, they're almost exactly the same. Yeah? Want to talk about it? Okay, the east boundary is the intersection of Fourth Street and Santa Fe, that's the same as last year. The west boundary this year is Santa Fe at First Street. That is new this year, that's based on recommendation from the sheriff, based on his observation of the event last year. He felt that the pedestrians crossing First Street were not safe, based on the way traffic was behaving. We put up temporary stop signs last year, and used crossing guards also, and his officers witnessed people ignoring the crossing guards and ignoring the stop signs. And even when they were being stopped by officers, they were just kind of hostile about it, so...
Along Stanislaus, what are the institutions and businesses that will be affected?
On Stanislaus Street? Let's see. I got a map here. So Stanislaus, we're not, I don't believe we are using Stanislaus Street.
You have a blockage, road closure, that will prevent people from going onto Stanislaus, it appears, from Stanislaus and Third Street, and Stanislaus and First Street.
Stanislaus Street is open. They can get to Stanislaus Street from First Street, because that First Street's not going to be completely closed, it's just going to be closed in the event area. So the plan is that, that way, local traffic can get through, so like, we've got a lot of residences that access their houses from First Street. We also have El Ranchito that accesses their parking lot from First Street. So what we're doing is putting up road closure through traffic signs, and then using road control barricades at Stanislaus on the other side of the street, so that people can still, you know, access their businesses and their homes.
I know the Assembly of God is there, and they also have temple afterwards, and those are two huge gatherings.
Yeah, we're okay, right? Yeah, we're not, we're not going to cut them off.
Your map doesn't suggest that.
I think it does, I mean, I think it does. I don't know.
There are two more maps in the back.
If I was doing a flanking movement on the ground, but I wouldn't be, that would say that I have a barrier. All right.
You know, I made the map myself, and I'm not like the best mapmaker, I probably should have had someone else do it, but... Yeah. And questions and comments?
Are you going to have any cheese tasting without having to pair with wine?
I wasn't planning on it. We got so many, we just had, the people had such a negative, a negative response to the way we did the cheese tasting last year, I want to try to really eliminate those, those comments. Now, if you're talking about outside the wine tasting area, we are going to be having something new in that regard, we're going to have cheese ambassadors, and the Riverbank High School Key Club has volunteered to basically walk around and distribute cheese, and like, you know, kind of like when you're at a party, and you've got a plate of cheese, and you're walking around, they can tell people about the cheese, just the regular people who are going to the event, and let them try our local cheeses.
I really like that, Chris, because comments I've heard in previous years have been, "I don't drink wine, I just came for the cheese, I don't see any cheese anywhere," you know?
Right.
We've heard that in the past, so I really appreciate that.
And I think that that observation is a really good one, that we need to, that maybe Sue and I need to kind of brainstorm a little bit. I don't, I don't want to hear, "Where's the cheese?", that means that we're doing something wrong, so...
So would there be information, if people want to purchase the cheese, would there be information, or?
You know, the feedback we've gotten from the people that make the cheese is they kind of just aren't interested in, you know, like, selling it. We've tried, and they just kind of, even, they just offered, "Please, you know, come and sell your cheese," and they're kind of, they just, they're busy making cheese, I guess.
We'll have, we'll have local cheese?
Yes, Chris.
Or is it?
Yeah, we have, we do lots of local cheese, but we also, I mean, we don't hesitate to get cheese from other parts of California, we don't get them from Wisconsin.
Chris, I'm glad to see that you addressed the wine tasting area, and have made some improvements in it, because I saw how that went last year.
Yeah, that was, well, we always, we always can improve, you know?
Any other questions coming?
It's our first time. And if this is the first time that nonprofits are hearing about, that, you know, we're at this stage where they can get involved, they should just contact you, right?
Yeah, they can contact me, and I can, they could just get my number from Sue, and we'll have probably another volunteer meeting before the event to try to recruit a few more, although I'm pretty pleased with the level of participation we have right now in Riverbank nonprofits. I feel like we got a pretty good crew of nonprofits. And you were at the... And you were at the meeting, you saw them. They're pretty neat people.
Well, I was just, you know, asking just for others that may be interested.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public comment. At this time, members from the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state laws, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA. And let's limit any sidebars to outside.
Hello? I'm back again, beating a dead horse. I have no expectations of anybody here changing or doing what I've asked. It's been over a year now. May 29th, 1914, or 2014, I came back from vacation. My mailbox was stuffed with mail. There was a shut-off notice for my water. I never saw it. There was a brick of mail. I went to take a shower. No water. I called the city. Did you shut my water off? Yes. How come? You didn't pay your bill. I didn't get a bill. Well, then, do you normally get it in the mail? Yes, I do. Well, then, you need to take it up with the post office, but it's going to cost you an extra $50 to have your water turned on. I said, "Well, that's a load of bull. I need my water turned on. I don't have any money until Monday," which my retirement check came on the first. Monday was Memorial Day. I told the lady in the office I would pay on Tuesday morning. She said, "No, we need the money before we can turn your water back on." I said, "I can't have my family go five days without water." She said, "Well, that's our policy." I asked to talk to her supervisor. She told me the same thing. I asked to talk to her supervisor. She gave me the Ms. Anderson here, and she told me the same thing. I told Ms. Anderson that I didn't have the money until Tuesday. She said, "Well, come back on Tuesday with your money." She was willing to let my family go five days with no water. And she... She said, "Oh, Mr. Foley, I know you. You're down in Riverco, right?" You go to our neighborhood meetings. I said, "Yeah, thanks. I'm glad you know me." I said, "Well, look, I just got back from vacation. I'm tapped out. I don't have any money until Tuesday." Now, it turns out that men want respect more than anything else. And I feel Ms. Anderson disrespected me. She knows me, and I told her that I was going to take it to City Council to fight that $50 fee because I never saw a bill. And actually, after I talked to her on the phone, I did find the shut-off notice. It was in a white envelope stuffed in with my, all the mail, little tiny white envelope I overlooked. I came down the next day and paid my bill in full, short to $50. Ms. Anderson said, "If you don't pay that $50 by Tuesday, I'm going to shut your water off again." I said, "No, you won't." She said, "Yes, I will." I said, "No, you won't." She said, "Yes, I will." And she went and had my water shut off a second time. Now, they tell me that I needed to pay $100 to have my water turned on. I came to this City Council meeting, and I'd read you some information that I took off the Internet about public utilities and shut-off. Your lawyer here tells me that this isn't a public utility. Excuse me? We're not a public utility? We're the public, aren't we? We get our water from you guys. You're supposed to post it on the house within 48 hours before you shut off a utility. The city told me they were going to look into it. They were going to get back to me. I got a phone call four months later from a woman in City Council Hall here, tells me that she's looking into it, and she'll get back to me. I never got another phone call. Now, I've talked to each of you in person and on the telephone. I need three people to override the city manager. Now, she's never been a city manager before she came here, and this is her first bit as a city manager. All I needed was three of you to say, "This is wrong." I've talked to four past mayors of Riverbank. They all said it was wrong. I couldn't get three of you to agree to override this woman. So I'm back again, asking you to look for another city manager because I don't think this lady's fit to sit in that seat. I don't want her living in my city, let alone representing my city. And I'd still like to find out what you did to change the way you shut people's water off in this city. I've heard nothing. And I've been to three City Council meetings in the last year. Nobody's done anything. Shame on you.
Any further public comment?
Good evening. My name is Vance Calton. I live at 3628 Riverside Drive here in Riverbank. Born in Oakdale, raised in Riverbank all my life. Never been to a City Council meeting before, but it is a pleasure that you give me this time. One of the problems I think you guys are very aware of is our homeless. I live on Riverside Drive. I have four homeless camps below me. I've talked to John Gingrich, which is a detective here in Riverbank, Michelle Garcia, which has been very helpful. Matter of fact, Michelle came with me to my house yesterday and took pictures. And my concern is, is just a greater awareness for you guys. I know that this is on the minds of the City Council, but I live with it every day. This morning, I woke up. Today's Tuesday. We get to water our lawns, and at 6:00, you get the smell of campfire. So with four camps below me, there is plenty of filth. City violation, or city codes I know have been broken as far as camping overnight, campfires, urination, defecation in the public. And I have four, well, I have five granddaughters, but we, my wife and I, or my wife babysits them. And my granddaughters have actually seen one of the ladies urinate in public. So again, this is just a greater awareness to you guys. Michelle came down, and one of the first things that she mentioned was when she walked over, and I'm not talking, you know, down the street a little bit, straight across, and I do have pictures if you'd like to see some pictures, that straight across the street, when we open our door, there's a guy named Bill Stevens, William Stevens. And he has, they call him Bicycle Bill, and his bike's right there, he's right there. And there's others. I know you guys are aware of this. I just deal with it every day. And it's been going a long time. When they cleaned out from Claus Road to Seventh Street, and they went down there and they did the cleaning, well, what happened was everybody moved down in front of my house. So I'm sure you're aware of that. And my presence here tonight is just to make a greater awareness. I'm going to tell you a funny story. Bill, and they call him Bicycle Bill, was coming up from the river, and he didn't look good. He was gray. He's 54 years old. I walked over to him, and I said, "Bill, are you okay?" It's not like they're my enemy. I've talked to him. We fed him. I always try to ask, "How did you ever get in this situation?" But Bill wasn't doing good, so I said, "You want me to call 911?" And he said, "Yes, he was having a heart attack. He has congestive heart failure." This is the funny thing. I get a bill from Oak Valley Hospital and Modestal Radiology with William Stevens at 3628 Riverside Drive, Riverbank, California, which is my address. Now, I don't know if that's, you know, adding insult to injury, but we sent it back, you know, returned to sender. But again, I'm just dealing with this every day. There has been crime. This is my dad, Bob Calton. He lives two doors down. I'm very fortunate to have my parents live so close to me. He has purchased the house between us so that we kind of have say-so who lives next door to us. And we have a very nice young lady that lives next door to us. Her son has asthma. The campfire smoke, which we deal with every day, affects him. But he's had his shed broken into, car broken into. She's had her house broken into. And we had some friends over one night, and they broke into their car. And this was in a period of just six months, you know, ago. So again, it's just an ongoing problem. I know that you guys are addressing it. I know that the landowners will not file a no trespassing, but I just hope there's something else that we can do, just to kind of eliminate this problem. And I know it's an ongoing thing. I don't know what a real solution is. Just getting them out of there is not going to solve the problem. There needs to be a home. There needs to be a shelter. There needs to be something else. But at least we could get that cleaned up, and some kind of control over that would really make us happy. Because again, there's other cars that come in that visit these people, and it's not a good crowd. It's, I think it's not safe for my grandchildren to play out in the front yard, let alone go across the street, dare say they go to the river, which we wouldn't let that happen. So again, I just want to make you guys a little more aware that we're there. We're dealing with it every day. And I know that there are things being done, and I just want to voice my opinion. I want to thank you for your time.
Now, this has been addressed to you before. It was addressed to you back in May when you discussed water and sewer. But I'm going to address it again. You have an issue with water and sewer connections in this city that are totally unfair. I'll give you, for instance, you can have one parcel with four separate units, four separate addresses, one connection, one meter, one bill, which means one flat rate. You can have another unit with a duplex on it, which means two units, required to have two connections, two meters, two bills, two flat rates, two sewers. When you started raising, this astronomical raise in our rates, which is Prop 218, I don't understand how you can say... Because you only charge us what it costs by the service. I don't understand how you can say it only costs us one flat rate to provide service to this person with four units, but it costs two flat rates to provide service to a person with two units. That's a violation of Prop 218. When I ask questions, I was told by the city manager that there is nothing in the city code that regulates how many connections, how many meters are required on a parcel. You're doing a lot of new building, a lot of new building coming up, both commercial and residential, and you have nothing that appertains that fits in your code, how many meters it has to have, how many connections. I think it's totally unfair. I don't think you should, like I said, Prop 218, it's a violation to have one parcel or have to pay way more than another for the exact same service. I think it's time you looked at it, because it's got something in your code. I disagree, by the way, that there isn't anything in your code because I know for a fact, when that duplex was built in '60, it was required to have a separate connection and meters with each unit. And the other ones have been coming later than that. You have no idea how many there are. Not only is R2 that way, R1 is why they have an extra unit. Now, too, they call them, what do you guys call it? How many of these people are getting away with it and disturbing, and another one will have to pay double?
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Before we move on, Ms. Anderson, do you have any comments on any of the items?
Yes. Mayor members of the City Council, one is I would like to just sympathize with Mr. Calton and his family and the issues related to the homelessness along the river. It is a challenge because the area that is below his home is private property, and the Sheriff's Department does need an authorization to be able to enforce the no trespassing laws in those areas. And today, we have not had success in securing those agreements. So it is a very difficult situation, and there's no easy solutions to that particular issue. The Sheriff's Department has worked really hard to try and manage with the way that they can. City staff has also been working to do that. In regards to Ms. Halbert, yes, we actually had a lengthy conversation in regards to this, and I did suggest that she bring her concern back to the City Council, that it had been noted when she brought this matter to the City Council's attention when we initially discussed this. It is something that the Director of Finance had indicated that she would include in research with direction from the Council. So I would anticipate that the Council will be reviewing this at some point in the future. So I think that her point is well-taken. It does seem like that's, there's an inconsistency there, and this is an opportunity for us to review our code and try and correct inconsistencies as we go forward. In regards to Mr. Foley's comments, he certainly is entitled to his opinion about me and my performance.
That's enough on that one.
So, and Mayor, I would just like to say that if Mr. Foley presented those facts, I would probably agree with him as well. However, the facts are not exactly as he stated them, and there are some missing pieces in that. And if anybody is interested in forgetting those missing pieces, I'd be happy to provide them.
This is not a conversation.
I would be happy to provide them. But again, Mr. Foley is entitled to his opinion, and I respect his ability to provide that opinion and certainly appreciate his engagement in the public process.
And just to further on, sir, for the effort on the homelessness, on October 1st, there's going to be a summit for this county of Stanislaus, which will address teen pregnancy, drug addiction, and all those myriad of issues that will, you know, enhance homelessness and see how, as a community, we can address. San Bernardino has a good model. I believe we're going to be looking at some of it. And instead of giving out food, if someone wants to give something, they have an app and they donate directly to someplace that will have food, so you don't have people asking for food right in your backyard. As to the private property issue, the chief's hands are tied on that unless there is a complaint on trespassing. And we're aware of it. We are aware of it. Please leave the pictures behind. I'd like to see what you're dealing with. I think I've seen several versions of the same thing. And I agree with looking at the water meters. Metering, charging any connection, if you have four connections, you have four basic bills. In 2007, there was a study done, conducted, that says that if you have a, like a trailer park, if you have a trailer park that has only one connection, if you meter everybody, your rates, I mean, your consumption will drop almost 35% in water, which we need, and 20% in electricity. So if you start charging each house, each unit, and that is doable as we revamp our metering systems. And I think that's something that we've asked staff to take a look at. So whatever happens in the, as we get the new metering system started, you'll start seeing changes in the way people are being charged. And I do empathize on that. I truly do.
Can I add something in here? And if you would prefer me to save it for my comments, I can do that, too. But we were sent an email from Mr. McRitchie that he wanted, he wasn't able to come to the meeting, but he had some concerns and some suggestions for the public comment time. Do you want me to do that now, or would you prefer that I save that for...
We all have that. I thought that was, that would be included in our remarks. It does not need to be.
Okay, perfect.
But you can...
It just kind of ties into some of the water stuff. And the only thing is, I really, I just wanted to say right here, right now, is that his suggestion on having some of the conversion tables and the monthly readings, I would really like for us to maybe take a look at some of those conversions. He's not the only one that I had. I had a phone call about people wanting to know their, know how they're doing on their conservation, or, you know, "Am I doing a good job? Is, you know, me carrying my water out to my garden really making a difference?" So Mr. McRitchie wasn't the only one, only person that has some issues with this, and the bills are not often really easy. I know we keep telling people we're going to a new system, but I think with that letter that we all received, I think we need to maybe get something else out there, and I hope we can address that. So that's what I'd like to say.
Item three, consent calendar, consistent with item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of March 31st, 2015, special City Council minutes. Item 3B1, approval of May 12th, 2015, special City Council minutes. Item 3B2, approval of the June 2nd, 2015, special City Council minutes. Item 3B3, approval of June 23rd, 2015, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority minutes. Item 3C, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank authorizing the merit to execute a lease with Christopher Ricky Presents Incorporated for the Riverbank Cheese and Wine Festival. Item 3D, extension of a general lease for continued use and maintenance of the Santa Fe Road Bridge Crossing of the Stanislaus River. Item 3E, memorandum of agreement for the... Item 3E, memorandum of agreement for the Clarabelle Road at Roselle Avenue, signalization project acquisition, certification, and construction phase. Item 3F, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank authorizing the submittal of annual program income report for the Community Development Block Grant Program Income Revolving Loan Account Funds. Item 3G, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank authorizing the submittal of the 2014-2015 Community Development Block Annual Performance Report. Item 3H, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank declaring certain property surplus as listed in Exhibit A and authorizing its disposal. One wishing to pull any of these items. Do I have any comments from the public on these items? Okay, they will match when we, okay, we'll pull 3C, any others? Okay, I'd like to bring it back to the Council for approval or recommendation on item 3A through 3B3, 3D through 3H.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar as stated.
I second that motion.
A motion to approve, and a second on all items for the consent calendar except item 3C.
Council authority member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 3C. And the, the question is what?
Ms. Fitzpatrick will address that question, and we can also, you can, the maps may not match because the lease may extend farther beyond than the actual event to provide for ingress and egress.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a, a map that was attached to that. There may have been, but the, the maps will match in the end. The boundary map that you saw in Chris Ricky's presentation, or that is available in the back, we have the encroachment permit or traffic plan map, which is the larger one, and that one just shows the detours of how the closing of First Street is going to happen. The internal map that we have is just showing you more of where things are going to be. Everything should match, so I can find out what's, yeah, those should match. The, the problem is, when you get to the traffic plan, and maybe Michael can help me on this, it's more complex. So if you look at the, the smaller boundary map that shows you where things are, that is the boundary map of the festival.
This is the boundary map?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the others give detour signs and all of that, which encompasses a larger area, because we want to give way advanced notice. So I can, I can.
You can address that offline?
I can.
Okay.
And we'll make sure everything's good. Yeah, so we'll, we'll fix any errors and make sure you are aware. But it really doesn't have too much of an impact on the lease of the streets because the boundary map is, is what we will be basing that on. Okay, we'll make sure it's right, and, and I'll compare them and find out where the, where the problem is.
Right, come back to Council on item 3C.
I'll move that we approve item 3C.
A second.
A motion to approve, and a second on 3C.
Council member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 41, update on the Community Outreach Program Plan regarding the potential options for creating City Council districts in the City of Riverbank pursuant to California Voting Rights Act.
Yes, Mayor members of the City Council, as you know, the city has been embarking upon a journey to look at the possibility of, of instituting district elections in the City of Riverbank. We, at this time, have had two meetings. One was at California Avenue School, and the other was at the Teen Center. Got some interesting feedback on those, and at these particular community forums, the public has an opportunity to review the proposed maps and be able to indicate their preference with little dots. And it's been interesting to have the results of each meetings. So we, we sort of taken a break for the spring and summer because the way that the, there was some positive momentum in terms of some legislation that is being considered by the state legislature, which is optimistic. So at this time, though, we'd like to revisit this matter to get some feedback on the draft plans from the public, and then be able to present those, that feedback to the City Council for consideration later this year or in early 2016. And then, at that point, we should know whether or not the legislation, which has been sponsored by Anthony Canello, it's SB 493, whether or not the governor has signed that. At this time, it looks, we're optimistic, it seems to be moving, it's moved through the Senate, and it's now moving through the Assembly. We spoke to Sandra Canello's staff earlier today, and they are, they are hopeful that the governor may sign this as early as late fall. So by the end of the year, we should have an answer on whether or not this matter actually has to go before the voters for consideration. If it does need to go before the voters, we would be presenting this feedback to the City Council for a, a final decision on which map to present to the voters. If the matter does not need to go before the voters, we'd be presenting the information to the City Council for consideration on which map should be implemented and then publicized and, and try and determine what would make sense for an implementation schedule. So at this time, the one thing that we do know is that we need to get some additional community input on the plans. So at this time, we are looking at, for the, from a staff perspective, of doing some community forum dates on Wednesday, October 14th, Saturday, October 24th, and Thursday, October 29th. And as at the last meeting, well, I know that each and every one of you would attend these meetings, that we have been counseled by our consultant from National Demographic Corporation, that because the Council's going to be considering this and, and has, will be acting on it, that it might be best for you to sit back and let the public input be provided and then presented to you for consideration, rather than actually participating in the meeting. And so at this point, we have not coordinated those dates with you because we are anticipating that while you'll be talking to people and getting feedback from people informally, that most of the feedback will come through the formal presentation of, of the actual results received at these various meetings. So at this time, what I'm requesting is just some direction, if that makes sense to you, if you would like us to move forward with the, the community forum dates, or whether you would like us to wait until we have a, a solid answer in regards to the legislation, which again, will come right about the same time.
I prefer that we continue on with this, the proposed forum dates. Nothing's a done deal until it's done. You don't know how protective one party is against the other, so you don't know if it'll pass the Assembly. You may have them anyway. No, I would just continue on as if we have to go, do it as currently stated. I don't know if anybody else feels about that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree. I think the more information that we can get out to the public, the more opportunities they have to give input is well worth the time and effort.
Yeah, me, too. Exactly.
So with that direction, we will proceed with the planning and continue, we're continuing to work with National Demographic Corporation. We did run those dates by the Vice President, who's been working directly with us, and will be planning to present a possible modification to that contract to include this additional scope of work, and then also plan for bringing back the, the results of these community meetings to the City Council later this year.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on item 41? Seeing none, we'll move forward. There is nothing but direction, and you provided direction.
Thank you very much.
Item 51, first reading and introduction by title only of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, amending Title III Administration by repealing Chapter 37, Emergency Services Organization and Functions in Its Entirety, and replacing it with a new Chapter 37 of the City of Riverbank Code of Ordinances.
Yes, and Mayor members of the City Council, Norma Torres Menriquez, who is an administrative analyst on our staff, and I think you all know her very well, but she will be presenting this item this evening. Norma is our key liaison with the Office of Emergency Services.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council staff. Today, we're going to go over just some suggested amendments to our ordinance. It hasn't been updated since 2008, and what we're really looking for most of all is to make sure that we're complying with the State of California. The revisions include several of the sections, almost every single section's being touched, but really, it's just keywords here and there to make sure, again, in an emergency, that we have the right verbiage in our ordinance to cover us and help us get through what needs to get done in an emergency. We're not going to go over every single section because, again, the, the goal here is to make sure that we're complying with the State of California. But I did want to touch on two items that are of, of most importance to these, to these changes, and one is that we want to make sure that in a disaster, that we're able to address a volunteer program, an emergency service volunteer program. And currently, the way our ordinance reads, we are not covered workers comp-wise, and some of the verbiage that needs to be in there for State of California. So we, we're making those changes. The nine cities in the county are looking at the same change, and the county obviously has already taken it to their Board of Supervisor and has approved the verbiage also. So we're really just making sure that we're covered. The other item that I wanted to highlight was, we currently have a representative on the Stanislaus Disaster Council, which this year happens to be Council, Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez, and we have an alternate, I believe it's Janine Tucker. One of the things that the nine cities have been discussing is, in the, in the case that the alternate, or either one of them are not able to, to attend, they want to make it so that the alternate can be appointed by City Council, but it doesn't necessarily have to be an elected official. One of the examples is that you can appoint the city manager to be the alternate. So next time you go to looking at those, who represents at the disaster city council, you can select an alternate, and it can be the city manager or anyone else that you, other staff member. Again, the nine cities are looking at that, everybody, when we, we discussed it at the Area Council, we discussed it at the Disaster Council in April, and everybody really seemed to be key that it was good to be able to have, especially the city manager, to be We're, we're asking for your recommendation, we're, it's, we're asking that you look at this first reading and that we, we look at the second reading in August 11th, which is right around the corner. Again, the main goal here is to make sure that we're complying. Any questions?
Just real quick, I, I see where the, the membership is, you know, it can be a non-elected. Is the administrative disaster service worker volunteer program on subparagraph six, is that what is the, we have an appointed?
Well, the.
Should have asked this Friday if we had a meeting.
So the members, are we talking the disaster council membership?
The, yeah, the council powers and duties.
Okay.
One of them is to administer a disaster service worker volunteer program.
Yes.
About the program that you were discussing with the other nine cities.
Yes.
The nine cities.
Yes, and that is an option that we could do ourselves as a city. If a disaster did come with this new verbiage, we could have our program, we could administer it, and they would still be covered under workers' compensation. The other thing is, we can partner with the county, or we can also work with another agency, for example, with United Way, and they could run, they could run that program for us. We would call, and we would say, we need volunteers, and they would help us administer that disaster worker program. But it just gives us more flexibility, and again, the coverage, that we're making sure everybody is covered that, in an emergency.
A little concerned that we have more and more people in the emergency services, and the decision makers are the, the police and the, the, those in charge, the fire, the police, depending on the emergency, and that the elected officials are there as an advisory capacity, and maybe help sway some decisions, but not necessarily take responsibility for the emergency.
To a certain degree, you're right. Boots on the ground in case of an emergency is, we're, we're going to take our cue from fire and, and from police. They are the boots on the ground. But one of the main reasons for our disaster council is so that, as elected officials, you're looking at these things before we get into that situation, or before that emergency comes. So we're, we're looking at the plan, so the disaster council will actually be looking at the update to the plan that we're looking at in the next couple of, probably next couple of months. You're also looking at potential other scenarios, or what do we have to have ordinance-wise or policy-wise? That's the disaster council's job, to help us make sure that that's there.
Have we met twice this year?
No, actually, we've met once, it was in April. There is a small change, we had it in the ordinance that they wanted to meet twice a year. We're changing the verbiage. That was one of the other things of, of being able to have a member on the disaster council that's not necessarily an elected official. You all have very busy lives, but often, we can't find a quorum. So they're changing, we're changing the verbiage to say that they will meet at least once a year. No other questions?
Any questions or comments from the, oh, wait a minute. This is a public hearing, I opened the pub, opened the hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to discuss item 51? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. And request that we accept the first reading and introduction by title only, Chapter 37.
Second motion, do we approve item 5.1?
Second.
A motion to approve item 5.1, and a second.
Council member Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.2, resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, approving a general plan amendment for this Riverbank General Plan Safety Element.
Mayor members of the City Council, this is an item that we are required to consider as part of the compliance with the state code. This evening, we have David Niskanen from the firm of J.B. Anderson and Associates, who has done the, the work on this, will be presenting the, the staff report on this evening.
Thank you, Jill. Mayor O'Brien, members of the Council, I bring forth a general plan amendment project to amend the, the city's safety element to be consistent with a bill called Senate Bill Five and the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. To give you a little bit of background, in 2007, the state passed Senate Bill Five, which directed the Department of Water Resources to, to develop the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, which is a long-range plan, I, that targets the Central Valley, the Sacramento, San Joaquin Valley, for eventual 200-year flood protection. And that was completed and adopted in 2012, and per the bill, cities and counties within the Central Valley are mandated to incorporate the findings, as well as the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, into their general plans by this year, July. And then, following that, incorporate zoning code that implements those policies and implementation measures. The general plan amendment must include data analysis contained in the plan, locations of flood hazard zones mapped by FEMA, which is 100-year and 500-year flood zones, and we'll get into the 200-year flood zones, flood zones in a little bit. Goals, policies, and objectives based on the data analysis identified, and feasible implementation measures designed to carry out the goals, policies, and, and objectives to eventually be 200-year flood protection at some point in the future. Now, the proposed general plan amendment, what we did was, we included flood hazard zones of 100-year and 500, and the 100-year, as you can tell, is in blue, and it follows the Stanislaus River, and there is some flooding into the San Joaquin County, as well as west into. and there is some flooding into the San Joaquin County, as well as west into the general plan area that's identified as A and AE. And then, the 500-year flood plain is a little bit more inundated. So, right into the River Cove is where you'll find where residents could be flooded with a 500-year flood event, as well as into San Joaquin County and the general plan area east and west of the city limits. The way the bill is written is, the 200-year flood plain, if you're not really sure, if a city or county is not really sure where it is located, then you follow the 500-year flood plain as being kind of the 200-year benchmark. And that's an important distinction there. And DWR has released 200-year flood plain maps, hydrological maps, but not for San Osaslas County. They did for Chico, Sacramento, mainly urban areas, which is 10,000 or more people, or urbanizing areas, which is 10,000 people, eventually 10,000 people within 10 years along the San Joaquin River. And that's mainly why this bill's written, is because if the San Joaquin River does flood by a major event, then there could be some pretty big devastating property loss, as well as potential human loss. And preliminary studies have been done by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and show that the 200-year does kind of follow the 500-year, but not all the way up to Riverbank. So, it's a little unclear where that line is drawn. But going back to the way the bill's written, is we'll follow the 500-year for the policies and procedures coming up with land use decisions. And Lathrobe and Manteca teamed up to develop a 200-year flood plain map, and that's with, they contracted out with a company, Petersen and Brewstad. And we've had some preliminary discussions with them in our cities regard, as well as other cities along the San Osaslas, like Ripon and like Oakdale. And we've got some feedback from them on whether Riverbank should develop a 200-year flood plain map. And what we're hearing is, we don't really have to, because the flood plain generally follows the San Osaslas River. And those areas, like in the River Cove, that the 500-year touches, those are already urban-built up, because if a developer comes in and wants to develop new homes, you have to go through kind of a decision matrix. If it's in the 500-year, then the Senate Bill 5 requirements kick in, which requires 200-year flood protection. And I'll get into that a little bit later. And we've updated the goals and policies to be consistent with this Senate bill, and will require any critical facilities, public facilities, in the 200-year, 100-year and 200-year flood, flood-proofed and above base flood level elevation. Also, we're, Policy Safe 1.13 is to ensure the city is in compliance with the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. And 1.14 is, as necessary, the city will participate in a regional flood management plan. And there's, and flood management plans are a collective effort between cities, counties, and reclamation districts to develop a plan for facility upgrades and for levee upgrades within areas that are in the 200-year flood plain that have been mapped, either by the DWR or by a private firm or city. And the closest one from here is just in the San Joaquin River, and we're a little bit far away to be participating in that. And as I've noted, the 500-year is not as inundated as it is on cities and counties along the San Joaquin River. And 1.15 is, the city will maintain, update, and make available to the public the FEMA 100-year and 500-year flood insurance rate maps and 200-year flood plain maps if they become available from DWR. The flood protection plan is being updated for 2019, so there could be some opportunities for some new flood maps for areas that they have not mapped yet. And then, 1.16 is, the city will use the best available flood hazard information in mapping from regional, state, and federal agencies, and use this information to inform land use and public facility investment decisions. Like I was stating earlier, new residential develop for the, well, we're thinking is that they'll have to go through a decision matrix. And how that will work is, if the facility is within a 500-year, residential is within a 500-year, then the requirements would kick in for flood protection. Most of the city is not going to be required to have that, so they'll already be knocked out of that decision-making tree. And then, for implementation measures, and the city will review annual and update as necessary, general plan elements to reflect current flood plain mapping data available. And then, Safe 6 is, will update the zoning code within one year. So, you'll find a little bit more information on how exactly the decision matrix tree will be developed, and how that will look, and how that'll affect land use decisions in the future. And for the environmental, for this project, we determined that for CEQA, it's under the general, that CEQA only applies to projects that have a potential for causing significant environmental effects. Future development projects will have to go through their own CEQA review, so that's the idea here. And moving forward, and as I stated briefly earlier, we are having some discussions with the City of Oakdale and City of Ripon to develop the zoning ordinance amendment, that language for the decision-making tree or matrix. And that'll come July 2016, as required by the Senate Bill 5. And our recommendation today is to, for you folks, to approve or adopt the proposed general, general plan amendment, amending the safety element of the general plan to the requirements of Senate Bill 5 and the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions before I open it up for public? This is a public hearing. I open it up to the public. There are no public questions or comments. I close. Bring it back to the council for action on item 5.2.
Make a motion to approve item 5.2.
I second that motion.
Motion to approve item 5.2 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 5.3, Continuance of the Public Hearing to Consider a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, Approving and Adopting a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Year 2015 through 2020 of the City of Riverbank.
Yes, Mayor Members of the City Council, we do ask that you would open the public hearing and close the public hearing and continue this matter to August 11th. We wanted to take a little bit more time to be able to present the capital improvement program for a thorough review. And however, it was noticed, and so we wanted to give people who might have seen that notice an opportunity to comment this evening.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I open up public comments for item 5.3, and realizing that this topic will be continued until August 11th.
There will be a public hearing in August.
Seeing no public comment, I close public comment. I recommend that we continue item 5.3. That's a motion.
I second that motion.
August 11th, I'm sorry.
I second that motion to move this topic.
Motion to continue to August 11th, item 5.3 and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
New business, item 6.1, Designation of Voting Delegate and Alternate to Attend the 2015 League of California Cities Annual Conference.
Yes, Mayor Members of the City Council, this is something that you do each year in preparation for the annual League of California Cities Conference. This year is expected that all five of you will be participating again in this conference, which is typically of great value. So, this, what the league would like, though, is for the council to formally adopt who will be their formal representatives when they do a vote on the resolutions. At this point, we're asking for the designation of the delegates that will represent the city, and that at a later meeting, we'll be presenting the resolutions for your consideration. We have not yet received those. This is the time of agenda preparation. We had not received those. We do expect that we will get them probably sometime next month. So, at this point, it's really your decision as to who you'd like to represent you. With all five of you going, that gives you a lot of options.
Not that difficult.
No, I think we should designate the mayor and the vice mayor personally. That's mine.
I agree with that. I think we should designate the mayor and vice mayor also.
I also agree.
Okay.
Me too.
Make it simple.
So, I believe our city clerk will need to have a formal vote on that.
We will. We're going to, we're going to open it to the public. This is a public-
Very good.
Anyone wishing to comment who should represent the city at the annual conference of the California League of Cities?
I don't have a comment. I have a comment on the other part of it. Is that all right?
What other part of it?
In the staff report, if I read it right, there's all five council members and what, two staff members are all registered to go to this thing?
Yes.
In the past, it's always been the delegate and the alternate. Can you justify why the city or the taxpayer should have to foot the bill for that many people to go to this thing?
Any other public comment? Bringing this back, I've only been here for five years, and all five years, we've had multiple members at the conference, other than the voting and the alternate. The value that I see from the league is, first time I went was the first year I was on the council, and we were able to resolve some issues with our sewer and getting our equipment that would have cost $5 million to survey all of our lines to under $300,000 for our current gear that can do the survey, and then, we can reuse it for when we have cave-ins or blockages. So, I think, thinking that alone was a cost-saving. It also gives us a lot of other ideas and helps us with some of the other improvements and way that the municipalities work. There are multiple sessions going on simultaneously, in that you cannot cover it all with two people, four people, or five. So, that's one of the reasons why. And I believe that is, that is my comment. And anybody else get a value out of it?
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. When I was first elected onto the city council, I had an opportunity to go to the last California League of Cities Conference. And one of the requirements of being city council is, you have to attend an ethics course. You can do that a number of different ways. They happened to offer one of those ethic courses in one of those seminars there. And I remember coming back after that and thinking, wow, that was really, really informative. There were, a huge part of it is all about the Brown Act and things that I didn't know, being a brand-new city council member. And I remember seeing the news, and a city not too far north of us, and their mayor was on the news, and I thought, hmm, he didn't attend that conference and learn what he should have not done, should or should have not done. So, it was very beneficial that, to me personally, to learn some of those things at that, besides being able to network and meet other folks from different-sized cities and, and share and brainstorm things that they're doing in their towns that, you know, we can bring to our towns. It's important to, to get out and see and meet those people and learn about what's going on in other cities, so that we can do an effective job up here for our town, so.
How many are on committees? Are you on the policy committee? There's three people on policy committee.
Public Relations Committee, yeah.
And they're required to be there also.
And one of the things that I found out, just in attending, was that Riverbank was listed as a HEAL community, which is Healthy Eating and Active Living. And I was not aware of that. I was just looking at a roster of cities. And so, what I did was that, when I found that out, I got information about what HEAL actually meant, and ever since then, I have been talking that up in, in all kinds of activities and all kinds of situations that I can let people know that we do, when we make decisions, that we also include that in our decision-making process, that we think about healthy eating and active living for our constituents and our residents and for the city. I mean, it's, it's good.
I just like that, too, that when I went to the first League of Cities meetings, the mayor hit it right on the, right on the head, and so did Councilman Cruz. We are meeting people and seeing what's going on in their communities. And just as an example, I met somebody at my first meeting from the State Department of Corrections, just through some talking, whatnot after a meeting. This gentleman said they were hiring over 8,000 people that year for that particular department. He gave me his cards, I passed the information on to appropriate county and city agencies, so the work could get out, because some of our people might get some of those jobs. And we wouldn't have some of that information if we didn't do some of these things.
Continue on with item 6.1.
I'd like to make a motion that we send the mayor and vice mayor to the, as voting delegates and alternate to attend the 2000 League of City, California Cities Annual Conference.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to designate the mayor and the vice mayor as a voting delegate to the California League of Cities Annual Conference and a second.
Councilmembers Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 6.2, Progress Report on the Activities Related to the Update on the Potential Expansion of the City's Sphere of Influence.
Mayor Members of the City Council, as you recall, when we met for our strategic planning session back at the end of March, one of the items that was discussed was an expansion of our sphere of influence, particularly to the east side. We are working with a private development company for a potential project on the west side that would require a sphere of influence and possible annexation as that goes forward. But also, looking to the east side, that there may be some economic development opportunities related to the Riverbank Industrial Complex, as well as the North County Corridor. And so, in order to make the most of those future opportunities, the direction was to evaluate the potential sphere of influence. So, I wanted to assure the mayor and the city council that we are working on this diligently. However, in speaking with the mayor, he asked specifically that we provide kind of an introduction this evening, because John Anderson, who has been our contract consultant, has been the primary purpose, person working on this, and he has been unavailable to attend our meeting, the last meeting and this meeting. And so, with that, tonight, I thought this would be a great opportunity to, one, reassure the council that we are doing this, and also, let the public know that this is going to be an item that we'll schedule for discussion on August 11th. And so, in order to provide sort of an overview of the process and what this looks like over time, I've asked Donna Kenny, our new planning and building manager, to provide an overview of what the process would look like for, for the City of Riverbank. So, at this point, Donna?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Jill has mentioned, I'll be giving you and the public a little basic information, and more will come to you details in August. Okay, a little bit of background. You hear the term sphere of influence used quite a bit. A sphere of influence is defined as a planning boundary outside of an agency's legal boundary, such as the city limit line, that designates the agency's probable future boundary and service area. What is LAFCO? The Local Agency Formation Commissions, or LAFCOs, are political entities associated with each of the 58 counties of the state of California, and their job is to oversee the formation and development of local government agencies in those counties. LAFCOs regulatory duties include approving the establishment, expansion, reorganization, and elimination of all cities and most types of special districts and their SOIs. LAFCO is generally composed of elected officials- LAFCO is generally composed of elected officials from cities in the county, and there is also a member from the general public that sits on the board. In order for Riverbank to modify its SOI, staff and city council must work with Stanislaus County LAFCO to make it happen. Modifications to the SOI can be developer-driven, which is one parcel coming into the city, generally with an annexation and a pre-zone application for development, or city-driven, sometimes as part of a general plan update. I'd like to mention, too, the city cannot take any actions which hinder or conflict with state annexation procedures. For example, a city cannot adopt a local ordinance which would allow city voters to pass sole judgment on a proposed annexation. There are four steps to modifying the sphere of influence. The first is a pre-application consultation with LAFCO on the boundaries, the development standards, and planning and zoning requirements. And as early as we can do this as possible makes the process go a lot smoother with LAFCO. Some of the factors that they would review in that pre-application includes the present and planned uses for that area, the present and probable need for services, the present capacity of city services, and any social or economic communities of interest that it may affect. And in fact, since July 1st of 2012, the present and probable need for those services by any disadvantaged community within the unincorporated area nearby has been added into that. Oops, I'm sorry. Went to the first one, skipped the second one. The second one is a resolution of application by the city council. The third is a municipal services review before or during an SOI modification. And there are seven written determinations I will go over in just a moment. Then the fourth step would be the LAFCO public hearing. Okay, of those seven determinations, the first is the growth and population projections for the affected area. LAFCO's gonna want to know exactly how big this area's gonna go, how many people need to be served. The second is the location of any disadvantaged, unincorporated communities nearby that the sphere of influence expansion could have an effect upon their community. They're, they don't have a government like you to look out for their interests, except for the county. Third, the present and planned capacity of public facilities, the water, sewer, and fire, our basic infrastructure needs. Fourth, the financial ability to provide these services. E, opportunities for shared facilities. Do we have two cities that are close by, maybe sphere of influence is touching? Could we have a joint wastewater treatment plant between the two that could share the burden of supplying new areas? F, the accountability for service needs, which includes the government structure, as well as operational effects, like special districts. And then the last is any related matter that is particular to a specific city or the area that they want to expand into. The next step will be a discussion of the sphere of influence modification options on August 11th of 2015. And just a reminder that all projects like this require a review per SEQA. So as part of the process, there will be also initial study prepared and is required. It was pretty basic, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to share that with you or get you the answers or incorporate it into John's next presentation.
Yeah, I had a question about the SEQA. You say that SEQA plan needs to be prepared, or is being prepared right now, or?
Not prepared yet, but it will need an initial study to determine what sort of environmental document it will need.
Okay, but do we have to make a, well, here your report, will John's report next before that decision is made, or we have to make a decision before the SEQA is?
The SEQA is a long ways out yet.
Oh, okay.
We need to, as part of John's program next council meeting, he'll provide you with some options. And so you'll need to decide where you want to grow first before we start looking at SEQA and some of the other aspects of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I open this up to the public. Any public comment? So you're gonna bring it back. The importance of this, especially to the east. If you take a look at our general plan, we go to Eleanor. And just on the east side of Eleanor is a school that is hanging out there with no path. That's one of the cleanups that we are planning on doing. There's others that, right along the side of the current city boundary, it's like an island, just still part of the county. We need to clean that up. Also, the North County corridor probable will swing to the north. And where, no matter where it intersects at Eleanor, if it is incorporated in the city, there will be an urban interchange there, which is less intrusive than if you have the large up-and-over ramp that Eleanor would have to be built. So there is a benefit to that. That would mean that there is better communication, better traffic movement from east to the North County corridor, get the 99, instead of traveling down through the city and trying to get the Claus Road at that intersection, or even further, the Oakdale Road to the intersection for the North County corridor. So there's a lot of that that we need to consider. And although we have an SOI and annexation, does not necessarily mean that there will be development. That is the concerns of the property owner. So that is the reason why we are looking at it at this period of time, and that it should have been done when we did the general plan update and adopted in 2009. But that was not done. So we're still cleaning up the planning documents. So at that, we received a verbal update. Is there anything we need to do beyond that? Okay. Item 7. Item 7.1, staff comments.
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to start out staff comments tonight with Chief Aaron Kylie.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members. I just wanted to give you a brief update as to...
Excuse me, can we hold the conversation down? Evelyn, I'll ask you to take it outside. Go ahead.
I just wanted to give a brief update as to some of Riverbank Police Service's recent activities. I recently found out that I'm not quite as rugged as I thought I was. We started our junior police academy with 25 cadets. So we had a full enrollment, which I'm grateful for. But my hat goes off to Councilmember Jones Cruz and Campbell, because now I'm, I'm just now starting to go ahead and, and get a glimpse into your world as far as trying to manage 25 energetic kids. They're sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and they're full of energy, full of questions. And we're doing our best to stay ahead of them. I fell off the decaffeinated coffee wagon this week, just so that I could stay ahead of them. So today, I went back on full caffeinated, and I'm, I'm holding my own. They're covering everything from, we're, we're starting them out and introducing them to law enforcement ethics and what it means to be a peace officer. Not, not what they see on television or YouTube or all these other things, but what it truly means, what it encompasses, the full spectrum. So that it's, it's an eye-opening experience for them. And after we, after we expose them to some of the things that they might be less enthusiastic about than we, like today, we brought in the SWAT team, and for an hour, they, they demonstrated not just their, their role and how they assist the public and, and other peace officers, but also the equipment that they use. And they got to drive a robot around the substation and try to find each other while they were hiding and do some other things that perks them up again. So we have three more days left. It's, it's been a great experience, and I, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and go out on a limb here and say that I anticipate the, the remainder of it will, will be great as well. So that is, that also ties into our six-month strategic objectives. That's something that we stated that we would do to try to, I guess, bolster our nexus between the community and police services. So we're, you know, we're just reaching out to a younger audience in this case. So it's a lot of fun. In addition to that, on this Thursday, we're gonna be at the community center, along with the vice mayor, doing another gang awareness presentation. And in addition to that, we are going to also do a, I don't wanna say tutorial, but an information on Nextdoor and Riverbank Police Services Facebook page. And that'll also be, be in Spanish as well as English. So we're, we're just trying to increase our audience, is what it amounts to. So, and then I'll close with National Night Out, August 4th, which is Tuesday. At 6:00 PM, we're going to kick that off with a meeting at Castleburg Park. From there, we'll go to Saffrono Park at 6:30. We'll also be at the same time as Zerillo Park at 6:30. So we're gonna split into two teams at that point. 7:00 PM, we'll be meeting at Crossroads Shopping Center in front of Petco, and also at Heritage Manor Drive. And then at 7:30, Creek Bend Drive and the 2,800 block of Buckskin Way. And then we will reconvene, all get back together at 8 o'clock, and all meet at Allegiance Court. So I just want to encourage our entire community to participate in that, come out and help strengthen our bond between law enforcement and the community, and it should be a good time. So that's basically it. Those are any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, chief. Um, next up is Norma Torres Manriquez, who's gonna file a little update on how people might be able to deal with the heat, particularly if they do not have air conditioning, if their air conditioning should go out.
We just want to remind everybody to keep an eye on your neighbors, especially those that are most vulnerable. We are gonna have, we have had the information that we'll have two or three days of triple digits. We've had heat before, but the, what we're looking at is to make sure in the evening that it cools down enough, just to make sure that our bodies are able to cool down and be able to go into another day of triple digits. The city does offer cooling zones. We do not offer cooling centers. Actually, I don't think anywhere, well, actually, that some of the homeless shelters do offer a whole cooling center. And those are open all day, and specifically for the heat. But in the city of Riverbank, we do cool zones. And that's just a place that people can go to, their regular hours, which can be extended if we need them, but they're locations that people can go into and just cool off. So for example, we do have the, the council chamber here, other public areas like the, the library. And there's other areas, we're, we're very fortunate to have our shopping area here, Crossroads, including one of the stores in, in the Crossroads Shopping Center, you can take your pets. So, you know, there's Petco, there's Home Depot. So again, it's just reminding everybody to, to really listen to your body, you know, hydrate, and, and just cool off for a little while, then you can go back out into the heat. If there are any questions as to, or people are interested in finding out more about the cool zones, we do have them on our website, which is at riverbank.org. And they could always call City Hall, and we can help them with that.
Thank you, Norma. As I mentioned earlier, Norma is our main contact with the Office of Emergency Services from kind of the staff administrative piece. Of course, the chief Kylie is in terms of boots on the ground. But it is, she, she is the person who receives a lot of the notifications and does the public relations in regards to the heat. So if there's any heat incidences, that is, that is who people might be interacting with. Finish it up, Maricela Garcia, who's Director of Finance.
Just want to take this opportunity to invite our members of the public to our next Budget Advisory Committee meeting, which is tomorrow night. It will be here at the city council chambers at 6 o'clock PM. We also still have one vacancy on the committee, so for anybody who's interested, the application is available on our website under the Finance Department, as well as here in the office at City Hall South.
Thank you, Maricela. And then finally, just to build on the vacation, the commissioner vacancies, we did receive a resignation from one of our planning commissioners last week, John Dagley, who served the community for many years. So we will be recruiting for that in the coming, in the coming weeks and going through that process. We also received word that the Economic Development Action Committee for the county is looking for a public member. And so we have that information available as well for anybody who might be interested. So anyone who's interested in getting more involved in city government, certainly feel free to call the administration office or contact our website and send an email, whatever is most convenient. So we are, in addition to that, with our new website, you can submit a, a request via our website. So hopefully, it'll make it a lot more easier for people to be in contact with us. And we look forward to getting more and more people participating. That concludes staff comments this evening.
Council comments, Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yeah, I have just a couple things this evening. Jacob Myers Park, the Friends of Jacob Myers Park Committee group is in dire need of some people to come and join. I know if you're out there and your friends or family are looking for some opportunities to volunteer and come and serve, they are needing some folks on that, on that committee. And also the Budget Advisory Committee, we heard Maricela speak about having a vacancy there. I would really encourage you to, to start spreading the word and letting your neighbors and friends and family members know that there's some opportunities for them to come and participate. Both of those groups, it's not a huge commitment. Yes, you, you come to some meetings, but you know what? There's some really neat people on, in those groups. And it's a nice chance for you to give back to your community. And again, I know people's time is, are very valuable, but it's not, it's not so much that you can't give a, one evening, a month, to come in and help your community out. They're doing some really good things, and it's kind of neat to meet some new folks and, and have a hand in some things that go on our community. So I'd really like to encourage every one of us to start spreading the word and maybe guilt-tripping your family members. I know I've been working on two of mine to come out and, hey, yeah, I got something I need you to do. So if you could help us out with that, there's some real need for some, some people to get out and volunteer in our area, and there's all kinds of things that people can do. I want to put National Night Out on my calendar, and this year, I hope the mayor and the police chief won't leave me on a corner like last year.
She won't let that go.
No, I won't. They ditched me. Okay, I might have been chit-chatting and missed the clue. I would just say, National Night Out was really a neat experience. I went for the first time last year. And if you get a chance to participate in one of those neighborhood functions or wanna go along with the, the folks here, I would encourage you to do that. It's real, it was really neat to get out there and meet folks in the neighborhood. And man, they've got some good food, the ones that we went to fed us well. And just, it was really a fun experience to get out there and, and go see some of the neighbors. I was in one neighborhood that, and I did a lot of walking during the campaign, but there was one neighborhood, I didn't even know where I was. If they'd have left me in that neighborhood, I don't know if I could have found my way home. But, so I just want to encourage you to put that on your calendar. I'll wrap it up here, I only got two more things. With the heat, and thank you for giving us that update about heat advisory and staying safe. And I know we'll have folks that are heading down to the rivers and whatnot. But I wanted to also let you know that the fire department has a free loner life jacket program. If you need to get life jackets for your kids that you're taking down to the rivers, you can go over there and pick one up and bring it back to them. It's free of charge, they loan them out. And I would strongly encourage the folks to take full advantage of that opportunity, especially with the heat that we're gonna have the next few days. If you're going down to the rivers or the parks, to please take advantage of that program. So thank you, that's all I have.
Councilmember Campbell?
Just a bit of good news that I received from the Consolidated Fire Chief Bradley earlier this week. The tanker cars that are coming through Stanislaus County are not carrying the oil from the North Dakota, South Dakota area. All that's bypassing our county and either going south through the Tehachapi or north from Sacramento. So we can rest a little bit easier, because you've read about a lot of these explosions that happened with those cars. And they're at least not coming through our county immediately at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Tucker?
I just wanted to say to all who participated in the rollout of the new website, congratulations. I think the new website looks great. And I hope that the, everybody will take an opportunity to go... to go into the website, navigate around, and learn where things are, that it looks a little different than the old website, so it's a very good thing. And I just encourage everybody to go and participate in National Night Out. It's an event where a lot of, a lot of good can come out of these events, these local neighborhood events, neighborhood watch program. You know, a lot of folks have embarked on their neighborhood watch as a result of participating in National Night Out. It's just a really good thing to get to know your neighbors and to look out for everyone. So that's all I have.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to publicly thank our Riverbank Police Services for helping to coordinate our gang awareness presentation. Again, I just want to reiterate that it will be held this Thursday, July 30th, at 7:00 PM at the community center, and that this presentation is part of our strategic plan for public safety. And a reminder that our founding night out at the farmer's market is every Wednesday until September 2nd, which means we only have a few more weeks. And this is our last week for free movies, and we have other exciting events planned for the month of August. And please come out and learn more about our Market Match program, where you can purchase fruits and vegetables and double the amount that you would get on your EBT card. And thank you to the chamber for sponsoring the backpack giveaway to the children in our community. And just want to mention about the cheese and wine plans that we have. It's very exciting to see this come together, and I'm glad that we decided to stick with it. Riverbank is known for the cheese and wine event, and I'm just pleased to see that we're moving ahead in such a good direction and everything is coming together. So thank you, Sue, for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. In the next couple of months, and we already know that we're in a structural deficit, we may be a little bit more than, than we had planned due to pushing payments of loans, ED Bank loans, for example, and others, down to where the payments do. So there's going to be tightening and tight times for us. But we do want to reiterate that we're trying to be as fair and equitable in a lot of the processes that we have, and some of the processes must change. And it was pointed out that there are some inadequacies in the way billing statements are for multiple units, and that physical arrangements or rearrangements will have to take place, and we'll look at that, we'll visit that to make sure that in the, in the end, we correct the errors that have been garnered over the past, the history of the city. Some of those processes will take a while to get everybody fair and equitable, but that will be in the long run, especially probably will take as long as our planning documents got corrected. And we're fully aware of the homeless situation. There are things that we can do, and we do, but we cannot go into somebody's property to evict a homeless if that private property will not allow us to go on in. So with that, I know that there are some out there that think that we're not doing anything, our hands are tied. Hopefully, Stanislaus County will have a complete process for dealing with homelessness, teen pregnancies, drug abuse, and any, all the other ills that are happening, especially since realignment. With that, we're going to go into closed session.
I have one more announcement.
Not now. Nope.
Just one more.
Item 8.1, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9 Alpha. Name of base Barnum Construction, Inc. versus City of Riverbank, Court of Appeals of California, Fifth District, case number Foxtrot 058692, and case number Foxtrot 059499. Item 8.2, conference with real property negotiator, Government Code Section 54956.8, property APN 075-039-002, zero terminal. Agency negotiator Jill Anderson, city manager, property negotiator Morville Romero, under negotiation price, term of payment, or both. Before we go into closed session, is there anyone wishing to comment on item 8.1 or 8.2? Seeing none, we go into closed session. Report on closed session 8.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, direction has been provided to staff. Item 9.2, report on closed session, item 8.2, conference with real property negotiators, direction have been provided with staff. With that, the city council meeting is now adjourned.[1625.83]